And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace Nixol and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the Hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the fire.
We call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, June 27, 2023. And Steve, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you, Steve. Madam Clerk, are there any corrections or deletions to the agenda?
None that I'm aware of, Chair.
Very good. Then we will go directly into our public comment section. I think most of you guys know the rules here. You have three minutes. If you come forward, give us your name and district if you prefer. If not, you don't have to do that either. John?
Vaughn, I live in District 3. The draft EIR commenters for the RISE project who noted serious issues with the EIR included consultants with decades of experience, environmental engineers, mining engineers, geologists, hydrologists, scientists, PhDs, lawyers, the California Air Resources Board, the City of Grass Valley, NID, other local and state agencies, and hundreds of local people who read the details of the draft EIR. For any item of substance, the final EIR consultants ignored all the commenters, claiming they were ill-informed, confused, or just wrong. Despite RISE's claims about working with the community, there was no attempt to clarify or consult or work together to see if maybe, just maybe, some of these people had a good point. Some examples of comments include: California Air Resources Board, it is not appropriate to determine asbestos risk from rock samples. The City of Grass Valley, cursory dismissal of alternatives is based on economic assumptions for which there is absolutely no supporting evidence in the FEIR. NID, NID is concerned that the level of infrastructure necessary to extend water to affected wells beyond the Bennett Road area would come at a substantial cost. Dr. Oberdorfer, the report produced by the mine's modeling consultant would not have been acceptably thorough in my graduate course. Dr. Chambers, the mining project as proposed in this EIR has a fundamental lack of information related to geochemistry and water quality. Jutne Haley and Weinberger LLP, the final EIR failed to address or correct the many fundamental issues with the draft EIR. As a result, the EIR violates CEQA and cannot be certified. It defies common sense that RISE and the final EIR consultants ignored all the experts except their own and made no substantive changes. You would think that if RISE actually cared about local concerns, they would have listened to all the experts, made time to clearly understand the issues, and would have offered appropriate adjustments. The fact that numerous comments of substance were disregarded points to a final EIR that has failed to establish what the impacts truly are and lacks credibility. I respectfully request you trust your planning commissioners and just say no to all elements of the RISE project. Files for Dr. Oberdorfer and Dr. Chambers are included in the footnotes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Calvin?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and citizens of Nevada County. My name is Calvin Clark. I'm from Rough and Ready. I'd just like to recall that we just pledged allegiance to the flag, and we mentioned that one nation, under God, indivisible, and a republic. We mentioned that, where some of the elements of a republic are that freedom cannot exist without morality. The idea of immoral people, free people, makes no sense more than dry water. Without sufficient character and moral fortitude, we cannot govern ourselves. When morality declines, the abuse of rights increases, and more government is necessary. Just as criminals need jailers and domesticated animals need herdsman, an immoral citizenry needs a police state. If we ever abandon our morality, we will lose our freedom. We've seen a significant decline, certainly over the last couple of years. Ignorant and free can never be. In order to be capable of self-government, we must not only be moral but informed. If we are not, we will tend to vote for politicians who promote the most and make the most promises. We will vote for more government until one day we have total government. An uninformed electorate will vote itself into slavery. Only a moral and well-informed electorate will vote for people of principle, those who will limit the government to its proper role. Our rights do come from God. When God created humanity, man and woman, and He gave us certain inalienable rights, rights existed before humans formed government. The sole purpose of government is to protect these rights. Government cannot grant us rights we already have, and it can't legislate out of existence our inalienable rights. Our form of government is based on this fundamental truth. If we ever abandon it, we will lose our form of government. And finally, the essence of freedom is the limitation of government. Government is necessary to secure our God-given rights because humans are not angels. Because government officials are human, government power must strictly be limited and consistently held in check. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Michael?
Morning, Chair Schofield. There is a process missing in our county governments, accountability and transparency. There was a process not long ago in our county called an administrative hearing that, in much respect, was similar to an ombudsman process for understanding the problems with the community. I did talk, when I ran for supervisor in 2020, I talked about an ombudsman committee process for the county as part of running for supervisor. I've talked to Lisa about this ombudsman committee process idea, and she basically was really helpful in me understanding that you guys actually are the ombudsman process in our community. My suggestion is to get back to the similar process for an administrative hearing process that actually involved yourselves or a representative of yourself for understanding what's going on in the community with staff and disagreements or problems in dealing with staff. I think that I'm noticing that there seems to be a knee-jerk reaction to the board in general, that staff are all doing amazing, great jobs. I'm suggesting that occasionally staff make mistakes, and these mistakes need to be brought to your attention through a process that I believe mirrors the older process of an administrative hearing process. The administrative hearing process that existed before Hardy's time and back in the beginning of Heidi's time was changed and adopted to a new process for cannabis, that being a hearing officer to hear the multiple cases brought to you guys' attention because there was a general consensus at that time that there were several personal and property rights violations with people filing multiple complaints or hearing processes. So you guys created a hearing process to hear all of those complaints or all of those concerns with the personal and property rights violations that were perceived by the people who are getting these abatement notices. That was morphed, I believe, in 2020 or 2021 into handling all cases in the county. And I actually believe there's a problem, more than likely, the process is actually not even legal. It's not right that the person making the judgment is actually employed by the county or the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Lee?
Good morning, Board. Here I am again about the Altisira Country Club and the fire hazard that they've created in my neighborhood. I brought it to your attention over the past several months, and I've asked for guidance and communication from the supervisor of my district and from the Board of Supervisors. So far, the silence is rather deafening. Current codes are not adequate or applicable to many of the situations. They must be revised and reviewed on a continuing basis to protect all of us. There's just not one ordinance that's going to cover every situation. I understand that. However, there are some vague violations that are really impacting my community. I'm wondering, for instance, what are the guides for corporations? The Altisira Country Club is a corporation. What guidelines do they have to follow on fire-safe conditions? They are a mutual benefit corporation, and that is a rather strange little position to be in. We need some help there. So far, I don't feel like I've really had help, the communications and guidance that's really needed to take care of this. The golf club, or the golf, Country Golf Club, has a real problem in picking up their waste products in my area. I assume, since they don't have the manpower or the money, that that spreads throughout the community and affects thousands of homeowners. We really need to do something to take a look at the ordinance, at the rules and requirements for that type of association, and work on this problem. I'd like a little more communication. I'd like to know where I go from here. And please, do not ignore the situation. I feel that it's been ignored for far too long, and I am not receiving the input back that I really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Is there any other public comment? Madam Clerk, are there any calls?
There's no calls, and I don't have any written public comments, Chair.
Very good. Then we will, at this time, close the general public comment and go to our next agenda item, and this item is Behavioral Health Director Phoebe Bell. This is a resolution approving Nevada County Mental Health Services Act three-year program and expenditure plan for the fiscal years 2023, '24, '24, '25, and '25 and '26. Includes an annual progress report at this time. Phoebe?
Good morning, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Phoebe Bell, Behavioral Health Director. Thanks for having me here today. So I'm hoping to cover a few things today, a lot of territory to cover. A quick update on some changes happening in the behavioral health world in terms of how our work is financed, and then presenting the Mental Health Services Act, or MHSA, three-year plan for your approval, and then chatting a bit about some of the upcoming issues, threats and opportunities on the horizon for the behavioral health system. So I wanted to start with just sort of a quick reminder of how behavioral health financing, big picture, works. For 23, '24, we will have a proposed operating budget of about $51 million. And typically, the pie chart of where our revenue comes from has actually been more into three equal thirds. About a third of our revenue comes from realignment, both '91 and 2011. About a third of it comes from the Mental Health Services Act, MHSA, and about a third of it comes from Medi-Cal typically. And I think that's probably one of the most important points to know is a lot of our system is geared around leveraging Medi-Cal. So we try to provide services that are in alignment with Medi-Cal expectations, and we use our other revenue sources to match the federal dollars so that we can pull down Medi-Cal revenue and grow our system in that way. What you see in this pie chart for this upcoming budget is a different slices of the pie shapes. And that's due to some changes happening in how we're able to leverage Medi-Cal, as well as some changes in how we're spending our MHSA dollars that I'll be covering today. But just wanted to ground the conversation in that sort of big picture, look at how our financial system works. The other piece that shifted that's worth calling out is the role that grants are playing in the behavioral health operating budget this year. That's due to a few factors. First, we've been pretty aggressively pursuing grants in behavioral health and, at this point, have $4.5 million of grant revenue on an annual basis that is supporting the work we're doing. Secondly, it's due to the fact that the state's actually using grants more often now for enhancements to programs and services than they have in the past. And then lastly, it's due to us bringing homeless services into the behavioral health department, and that's an area where grants fund a lot of that work. And so that's why that is now a more meaningful piece of the pie than it was in the past. So the big thing happening in behavioral health finances is what's called payment reform. And this fits under the broader efforts of CalAim. And a reminder that CalAim is a change initiative for the Medi-Cal system as a whole with the goal of getting to better health outcomes for people. Sort of super high level, the state looked at Medi-Cal. We spend billions of dollars on healthcare for people, and there are still subsets of people for whom their health outcomes are pretty terrible. For example, people with serious mental illness tend to die 20 years younger than people without serious mental illness. And the state basically is saying, we need to do better by subgroups of people that are at much higher risk for poor outcomes. And one piece of how we're going to do better is to create more consistency across our many healthcare delivery systems. You have physical healthcare, you have behavioral healthcare, you have dental care, you have children with disability care, a whole bunch of separate systems. And behavioral health kind of operated the most differently from all those other systems. And so one of the goals of payment reform is to begin to align us better with primarily physical healthcare and how the physical healthcare system works so that we can work together more effectively to get to better health outcomes for people. So a really good vision of what they're trying to get to with this. For us, what it's meaning is, we currently work in a world where we are essentially paid back for certified costs that we incur. And so if we provide $100 worth of therapy, we bill Medi-Cal, we get $50 back. But at the end of the year, if it turns out it was actually, it cost us $150 to provide that therapy, and we can show that we incurred the costs in alignment with all the Medi-Cal rules, et cetera, we will get paid the $150 because we're cost settling to what it actually cost us to provide that service. We are moving into a system where we are simply paid for the services provided at a rate that's set by the government ahead of time, set by the state in conjunction with the feds. And so there's no more cost settling back and forth where billing at that rate for the services we provide. This is still a fee-for-service system, meaning we do a service, we get paid, which is what we were under before, but we're losing the cost settlement aspect of it. And I think it's important to note, the state sees this as a stepping stone towards a more risk-bearing system called capitation, which is when you just get paid for your members and then you manage all their care. You're not paid for the services you're provided, which is how most health insurance companies operate. That's the business model. So this is a stepping stone towards that system. So what does this mean for us? There are some really exciting opportunities in this shift. And the first bullet really, basically, is that if the rates are good, and the state has worked really hard on setting rates that we feel pretty optimistic about, the Behavioral Directors Association, the JPA called CalMesa, all hired a lot of experts to work with the state's experts to try to build rates that we believe are going to work well for the public behavioral health system. So if the rates are good, we could provide that $100 of therapy and get paid $100, but maybe it actually only costs us $80 to provide that therapy, and now we have $20 that we can use to reinvest in our system. The problem with the old system is that you only could ever make as much money as it costs you to do exactly what you do. Under the new system, you can essentially generate more revenue than your costs and then reinvest that revenue in facilities, in infrastructure, in staff development, in all the things that allow your system to improve and grow over time. So that's the biggest potential upside of the new way that we will be paid. This is also, like I said earlier, our opportunity to better align our system with the physical healthcare system. And the state's goal with this is that when we're paid so differently, they can't incentivize working together financially. And so looking ahead, there'll be more and more, what they call like value-based payments, basically money incentives to, if you can get to better outcomes, follow up after an emergency department visit, you can be incentivized to do well or penalized to not do well. So, but you have to be able to do that across systems because multiple systems impact some of those outcomes. This is also a chance for us to better capture the really complex needs of the population that we serve. Right now, because what you're allowed to bill under Medi-Cal is very, very narrow, and we're very, very cautious about it because we don't want to have audit findings, there's a lot of costs that are not apparent to the Medi-Cal system that we incur as we serve people. So for example, we might have somebody and provide 24-hour daycare, but we can't bill Medi-Cal for that. One of the goals of payment reform is to paint the more complete picture and find new ways to bring more things into the Medi-Cal system, which both generates revenue but also sets us up for the future where if they set rates for us in the future, they understand the complexity of the work we're doing and the cost of it. And then another positive is that some amount of those cost settlement audits go away, which is great because currently, the back and forth, we incur costs, we cost-report, they cost-settle, they audit, and money goes back and forth for 10 or 15 years based on like our cost report from 2011, we're still settling, for example. So it does away with that really lengthy process, which makes it very challenging to monitor the finances of the behavioral health department currently. So these are all the pluses of the change that's coming. There's some risks as well. Because the only way we make revenue now is based on fee-for-service, based on those rates, good rates are critical. And like I said, we think good rates were developed, we're hopeful the good rates were developed. There are significantly higher rates than what we currently get paid on an interim basis by the state. But if we miss something in that, you know, costs of services are rising really quickly. They built in inflationary variables, but did they build in enough? Vacancy rates are really high, they built in variables for that, but did they build in enough? So if rates aren't as strong as we think they are or hope they are, there could be challenges in the system. We also have significantly more pressure to be highly productive. And this is both our internal staff but also all of our contract providers. We only generate revenue by billing for services. And so there's going to be a very strong focus on staff productivity and monitoring that really carefully, both again for ourselves but also for our providers. And that's a little bit of a lift for some of them who haven't necessarily been tracking in that kind of way to that kind of detail. And so we've been working a lot with our contracted providers around how to be set up for success under this new way of the behavioral health system being financed. And then just to really underscore, financial risk transfers to us in a way that it didn't exist before. Financial opportunity transfers to us, but so does risk. So again, under cost-based settlement, at the end of the day, if it costs more than you thought it was going to cost, and you can prove that, you know, everything was done correctly and your costs are appropriate, you'll get paid for those costs, and that will no longer be true. And so that is the significant risk of where we're at right now. So I think kind of high level to kind of close out that payment reform piece, and I recognize this is complex stuff, and feel free to interrupt me with questions if you want. Otherwise, at the end, I'll certainly leave time for that. But I'm trying to find the clearest way to explain these changes that are happening. Again, there's just mostly a lot of unknowns right now. There's a lot of detailed pieces to those changes that I won't get into but that require analysis of cash flow, that require understanding of how we're documenting to a new set of procedure codes that we don't typically use. The things we can bill for have shifted, so a lot of moving parts that still, you know, it's going to be a bit of a bumpy ride for a little while. And at the same time that all this, this financial system shift is happening, we're also changing our electronic health record, which also creates its own bumps. So we're documenting in new ways in a new system and billing in new ways in a new world order. So a lot of change happening. I think on the positive side, we are still incentivized to provide more services, which I think aligns with our desire to serve as completely and well as we can the people in our community. And because it's fee-for-service, more services means more revenue. So that's a really good part of sort of this place that we're at in terms of how we get paid. And then I mentioned productivity, and again, how, when we get to capitation down the road, which is essentially where the state says, for everybody that you provide services for, you're going to get paid X amount per month, and you have to manage their care across the system, we have to surface as much of our costs as we can during this stage so that we're in good shape to get good rates in capitation. So that's kind of high level, where we are at as we head into this chapter. Where we are at as we head into this chapter, and seeing some looking like questions?
Yes, certainly.
Since you invited interruption, I mean, my biggest worry about all of this, and I'm assuming you guys have thought this all through, is when you have a client who needs a lot of services, so doesn't fit into this box, or some of the rules and laws that are coming down saying you must do X, Y, and Z with, you know, this sort of more aggressive 51-50 legislation that's coming, does this account for when a client might cost a million dollars, get a million dollars' worth of services, and then other clients have to be cut back? Or is there any accounting for sort of exceptions to the average client that is going to end up being the way costs and fees get set?
Yes and no. So on the positive side, if you provide a million dollars of services to somebody, but they're all Medi-Cal billable services, then great, you're generating revenue and you can cover all those exceptional costs for that person. So that's the plus of a fee-for-service model. The minus is if, often when we have a million-dollar person, most of those costs aren't actually billable to the Medi-Cal system. And so the reason your rates are higher than your actual costs is because you have to absorb all the costs of your sort of unbillable or unproductive parts of your system. And so the more unbillable costs we have, the more we have to absorb into our productive side of the house, essentially. And the more we spend our MHSA or realignment on non-Medi-Cal services, the less we have to buy Medi-Cal services because you need match money on the Medi-Cal side, and you buy twice as much services because you get kind of 50 cents back on the dollar.
So the Medi-Cal match is staying the same?
Yeah, like how much they match at, yes.
All right, okay, okay. Thank you.
Totally. And I will, at the end, I do talk a little bit more about some of the changes that are coming with proposed legislative changes, et cetera, and so we can dive a little more into that as well.
Vip.
Appreciate it. Similar, I had the same exact question, so thank you for answering that. My question is more along the lines of areas where there's a low population with a high need, so you have overhead, infrastructure overhead sitting in one area with a low population basis to absorb that cost. Can you just describe how that's handled? You probably know the area I'm talking about, I think.
Yeah. One of the things that you can no longer bill for, that you used to be able to bill for, is travel time. And so in a rural county, that's going to be a challenge for us. So before, if we paid a case manager to drive to Truckee, for example, we could bill the time that they were heading up there, as well as the time that they're there doing services. And so on the flip side, we obviously expect our staff and our contracted staff to continue to provide the services that we need in our system, like services for people in Truckee or North San Juan or Penn Valley, or wherever it might be. And so that's going to be some of the learnings of how do we still make a go of things under payment reform. The rates assume you have some less productive parts of your system. They assume you're going to do some travel, and they analyze travel billings across the state to kind of build the rates. And also, we'll have to be smart about how we do things like travel, or how we do small programs in where you have less census, essentially. And it's going to be part of our learnings. So maybe we organize our travel a little bit better and designate certain days, or whatever those things are. But it's going to take us some time to sort out how to keep doing everything we want to do and need to do while also generating the revenue we need to generate.
Lisa.
I have one quick question, thanks. So as you work through this new system and the unknowns become knowns, do you feel that the state is going to be flexible in fixing some of the problems that might arise from so many unknowns? Or is it just going to be too bad?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to answer that. Department of Healthcare Services really wants us to succeed, and they've been pretty good partners in this, but they've bitten off more than they can chew, too. So we're not getting guidance in the timely fashion we're supposed to get it. We were promised three months of sort of upfront funding to get this system going, and now the legislature's not agreeing to that, and so it's still unclear what we're going to get and when we're going to get it. So there's a lot of back and forth that's been a little bumpier than, and a lot of political pressures on all of it.
Marty?
Thank you. On the productivity of staff and contractors, one of the questions is that when we have, for example, in the consent calendar, there's those long-term large contracts for service providers. As we grow and change and understand this changing kind of paradigm, are there, do we have an ability to modify the way that we manage the contracts or change the contract provisions to hold them accountable? Or is there some change management plan that will allow us to affect change with the contractors as we see those production levels that are needed, or interject, I guess, back into the loop and change and grow with us?
Yeah, no, it's a really good point. What our team, our fiscal team particularly, spent a lot of the last few months on is reworking all of our contracts. Clearly, we have a lot of contracts, we'll talk more about that. But how we financially hold accountable our contractors, but also help them build the tools they'll need to be successful in this new world order is a lot of our focus. So we've added in, you'll see in some of the contracts, what we're calling sort of incentives to the contracts, where if you show us that you have a good productivity monitoring tool, we'll pay you X amount of money. If you show us your financial management strategy and how you're going to track your revenue generating, we'll pay you a certain amount of money. And that's based on coaching from the state organizations to say, we've got to help our providers. And it's the same way the state's treating us, this incentive-type approach, like, show us that you're making progress towards these changes that have to happen, and then we'll financially incentivize you to do that, and it'll help you be successful.
Good, thank you.
Vip, I appreciate what you do. This is, I mean, it just is so convoluted, really truly is, because the state then still makes it difficult. It's like housing. Housing is a huge component of this, but yet it's still very difficult to build housing. So it needs like, I don't know, I mean, I listen, you brought up some really good questions that I was thinking in the beginning, too, but how do we make that all come together without sinking the ship? You know? They want us to get grants to do stuff. We make these great programs that work, and then the grants go away. So your job is going to be specifically challenging, that I can see. We're doing such great things here in the community with our behavioral health program. I mean, lots of work to be done. But I mean, I look at this housing component, when I look at these funds and how that's going to play out, and that's where I see the biggest challenge. So I think this is, this one is confusing, and appreciate the time that we get to spend in having this conversation, and I'm sure there'll be more as we move through this budget cycle.
Yes.
So let's go ahead. Vip, continue.
Sounds good. So I'm going to shift gears a little bit, but the two kind of reconnect back, sort of big-picture budget and Mental Health Services Act. So as a reminder, one of the regulations around MHSA dollars is that every three years, you develop a three-year plan of how you're going to spend your money for the upcoming cycles. You do this based on what are the community needs and gaps. And so we spent about six months doing focus groups and key informant interviews. We hired a consultant to really take the temperature of the community, what's working, what's not working, what do we not have in place that we need. That was then the basis for designing a three-year plan, which is basically a blueprint for how we want to spend our money for the upcoming three years. And then we conducted an RFP process for most of those services so that all ideas could come to the table, and all community partners had an opportunity to participate in implementing that three-year plan, essentially. And I want to just acknowledge, this three-year plan happens in the context of what continues to be the singularly most volatile and unpredictable funding source, maybe in the county, but certainly in behavioral health. This chart, the bar showed the actual revenue, the line shows the percent change year over year. And you can see, this year, we're down 40% from what was projected. Next year, we're about to be up 160% from current year revenues. So it just bounces all over the place, and we cannot obviously fund programs like that. We can't, you know, quadruple funding and then cut funding, and then, you know. So for my job and the fiscal team's job, it's like, how do we find that through line, that midpoint through the middle of that to consistently and evenly fund programs and yet get the money out the door to the community? One of the things that happens in this volatility is that often revenues end up coming in higher than projected. And so we've had the situation the last handful of years where revenues come in a little higher than we projected and budgeted for, and expenses come in lower largely because of the workforce crisis. Our contractors aren't spending as much money as they thought they would, we're getting more money than we thought, and then we end up adding to our fund balance in MHSA. And I'm sure you're tracking at a state level the pressures to not add to fund balance in MHSA. So that's a way of explaining why we have a pretty aggressive three-year plan, which, again, aims for that through line of expenditures that doesn't, some years it's less than revenues, some years it's more than revenues. You'll see that, you know, if everything went exactly as predicted for the next three years, we would be deficit spending in MHSA. We are very confident that's not going to happen. Revenues will likely come in higher than projected at somewhere in that cycle, and we know expenses will come in lower than expected, and then we can adjust as we go. It's also increasingly less relevant what our three-year plan is, based on what we'll talk about in a minute, which is the reform of MHSA. But in the three-year plan in front of you today for approval, that is the sort of blueprint, is this sort of steady-state expenditure at a much higher level than we've been spending at recently, in part to intentionally spend down some fund balance, and in part to account for that volatility and unpredictability in a consistent way. What's important to note, and I'm not going to obviously read through all these, but our Mental Health Services Act dollars is really a lot of what drives our extensive investment in our community partners. And you are well aware that I often bring contracts of pretty significant size to you, and most of those have Mental Health Services Act funding in them, and you'll see them in these lists. MHSA currently has different pots within which you can spend the money and different restrictions and expectations around those pots. This is what's called the Community Services and Supports, and it's where a lot of our sort of more intensive, deeper-end programs happen. The proposed amount is the MHSA portion of their contracts. Their actual contracts are typically at least twice as large as what's on this list here. And then we have the prevention and early intervention pot, which is where we support many of our more upstream and community-based providers, often working with children or other groups that are at higher risk for poorer mental health outcomes. And there are just, you know, lots of really wonderful community partners that we get to work with in this way. To highlight what's new in 2324, there's a handful of programs we haven't had before, including our local Nisanon tribe put in a proposal to do some work, doing some bridge building with Nisanon people in Nevada County who traditionally aren't using behavioral health services at a very high rate, so we're excited about that. Some more, an evidence-based senior outreach program that works on depression in homebound seniors, excited. You can see the list, but some great new programs, mostly in the prevention and early intervention vein. And then in addition, we are really expanding programming with our existing providers. We had pretty large contract increases with most of our core providers, and particularly our adult full-service partnership provider, Turning Point, where we are increasing slots and adding an evidence-based employment support program, which we're excited about, and some more housing dollars, some more capacity from Stanford Sierra Youth and Families, and also Victor isn't on this list, but our major youth-serving organizations. So excited about what we'll be able to see happening in our community as a result of these investments. So kind of high level on the behavioral health budget, it's a pretty big growth in our budget, in part reflecting that aggressive spend on MHSA dollars, and in part reflecting those higher Medi-Cal reimbursement rates, that if we're as productive as we hope to be, we'll generate more revenue than we've been able to generate before. I want to underscore, about 68% of our expenditures happen through contracts, which is why so many big contracts come in front of you from the behavioral health department. And this year in particular, per some of the points you were all making, we are likely to be back in front of you more often than usual to make contract adjustments as we all figure out what's working, what's not working, how we need to adapt under the changing world in front of us. So just a heads up on that. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge some of the significant threats that are on the horizon, and particularly around MHSA. I'm sure you've been following some of the significant publicity around the proposed ballot measure for March of 2024, which would reform MHSA, and it would then become BHSA, or Behavioral Health Services Act. There's a lot in there. It's changing as we speak, and our state association is busy analyzing those changes and what some of the impacts might be. Some of the things that jump out at me that I just want to flag for you right now, there's a lot of, you know, I talked earlier about how it's important to us to use our revenues to generate Medi-Cal revenue, so by way of providing services that fit into the Medi-Cal system. Under the proposal, one-third of dollars would have to be in a housing pot, and that housing pot would not leverage any Medi-Cal. So we currently spend some money on housing, but anything that we cut out of direct services and put into that housing pot is really, if we take a dollar out of service and put it into housing, it's a $2 cut in service because we're giving up the Medi-Cal half of that work as well. And so that impact could be very significant. In addition, the proposal adds in serving the folks who have only a substance use disorder, not a co-occurring or primary mental health disorder. This is a group of people that most certainly needs more intensive services, a better-funded system. The idea is great, but if you do it off the backs of our existing mental health services dollars, again, we're going to have to cut programs to add in new populations, and so where do we cut, and what does that look like? And then within the housing pot, we have to spend over half the money on people who experience chronic homelessness. Again, a group that very much needs more investment of resources and dollars, but at the end of the day, we house a lot of people in our system who haven't chronically experienced homelessness because we house them, and because we provide the supportive housing that's needed to avoid homelessness. And if we're not able to continue to do that, we need people to become chronically homeless before we can bring them back in, that's going to be an unfortunate shift as well. So those are some of the like specific issues of concern right now, but there's a lot more complex issues that we're just beginning to understand that I think will continue to be a dialogue. Again, great concepts, great goals, but in the details, a lot of concern about how this will impact the programs that we invest in currently and that are, for the most part, really loved and needed in our community. Additionally, I think we've talked enough about payment reform and the electronic health record shift, but a lot of unknown and risk this coming year around that, and it'll be a learning year. And then lastly, there's probably about 12 other major change initiatives coming at the behavioral health world, Care Court, Universal Mobile Crisis, Behavioral Health Connect, which is a new waiver that will add a bunch of different mandated services to us, criminal justice involvement work, et cetera. So a lot going on. Just in closing, again, the light is bright about 10 years down the road. Like, the vision that everybody's trying to get to is really, you know, positive and something I think we would all agree with, like better, comprehensive, targeted services to this population. But there's a lot of complexity and potential road bumps between here and there, and just, it's going to be, could be a bumpy year, but we're excited about where we're trying to get to. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's really interesting that they would put all this together, bumpy, lots of unanswered questions, and then next year, change it all again, start over, really. Sue?
So just one little question, because I know, look at all this, and I think about, what about staffing? So that's the other challenge here. I mean, like, right now with a lot of behavioral health, there's not a lot of psychiatrists out there. So, I mean, are they doing anything that helps with any of that process?
Yeah, there's a lot of talk about how to invest in the behavioral health workforce and the pipeline. I mean, there's a pretty great, CalMesa hired RAND Corporation to do an analysis of the California behavioral health workforce, and there's a pretty significant gap between the number of eligible clinicians being kind of spat out of all the different educational programs and the demand. And so there's a lot of thinking about how do we incentivize more people, how do we incentivize colleges to add more slots, how do we create other types of workers in the system beyond our licensed and credentialed folks to be able to fill some of these positions? But you're right, it's a big need.
Yeah, because I'm watching this, I know this overall state system, but it's very different in a rural community. And so that, again, is I think we're really struggling. It's like, you know, you have to spend these dollars in certain specific places where counties probably could see those places where they need it more specifically without having to do some of this. So yeah, this is a, and then like Ed just said, and then next year, you have to come up with a new idea. So this has been interesting. Every time we talk about anything with behavioral health, I'm always in awe of what we do in a small community, and then have to really kind of make that fit with what they do through the whole state.
Lisa? Marty?
Thank you. On the SUD addition, is it the same qualification for Medi-Cal recipients only, or is there an expansion of the treatment population? an expansion of the treatment population?
With Mental Health Services Act dollars, you don't have to serve the Medi-Cal population. If you don't, again, you're kind of leaving money on the table that you could otherwise be leveraging, but, yeah. The current language, I believe, has kind of prioritization language, and sort of people experiencing homelessness, things like that, so people are likely to be Medi-Cal or Medi-Cal eligible, but it's not a requirement.
Does our county have extended services to those folks that aren't eligible for Medi-Cal?
On occasion.
On occasion.
Yeah, and especially, our PEI programs is where we serve a lot of people not on Medi-Cal.
Excuse me, PDI?
Yeah, there's prevention and early intervention programs, school-based programs, things like that. We, we don't ask what people's insurance status is.
Right, don't limit those for that group?
Correct.
Okay, and then just one more quick question. In Budget Subcommittee, we talked a lot about the healthcare changes coming into the, to the jail system, and what, is there a crosswalk, or are there pieces that are connected to what you're describing for us here today that will make changes to that budget unit in the future, or is it your expectation that that may occur?
So that's like one of the, the 12 change initiatives coming that are, it's still unclear exactly what those impacts will be and what that will look like, but what Hardy is referring to is, or sorry Supervisor Bullock, is that the state has gotten permission to allow Medi-Cal to be billed for some services that occur in jail, which traditionally has not been allowed. And so how, what that does to both kind of existing jail-based health services, as well as community-based health services, including behavioral health services, is still a little bit unclear, like, who pays any match, how does the cost work, what are the benefits, what, what gets added? In addition, there continues to be new populations eligible to the enhanced care management benefit, which is that sort of intensive case management under CalAim, and so people leaving jail will soon become eligible to those services as well, which also may help, like for behavioral health specifically, might help allow us to bill for some of the work we already actually do, or add to that, and then on the flip side, get more people connected into our care, which could create higher demand.
I think I understand that. Okay, thank you.
I know.
I don't think I have any more questions. I just appreciate your clarity and ability to explain it to us, so clearly what, what the bigger picture issues are, and then how it's going to impact our departments, but more importantly, our clients, the services that we provide to people who need it in this county. So I know we're getting, I'm getting hit from all over the place about advocacy on some of these issues, so please just make sure to keep us all really as well-informed as you can about what we should be advocating for to make this work right, because there is a lot of movement happening in the legislature, it sounds, legislature right now, it sounds like, and we want to be advocating for the right thing, so please help us understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, Heidi, I, Heidi, Phoebe. So I guess if I understand it, at least as we look at, at the budget process, and you explained this earlier, that more revenues would come in than anticipated, expenditures might be lower, which meant a bigger fund balance. What this system will do will be more based upon the actual work that is accomplished here within the county that year, so it'll be less volatile, would you, would you say that? And, and are we, what we are doing here is more of an estimate as to what we are able to accomplish this coming year?
Yes, so I think MHSA revenue will probably continue to be volatile, so that, that won't shift.
That's part of it is.
Right. And yes, I think more than most years, this budget is our best understanding of what we think is going to happen, less with MHSA revenue, but more with underpayment reform and how much Medi-Cal revenue we'll be able to generate. And, yeah, this, this year will tell whether we kind of got that right or didn't get that right, and we obviously are basing our estimates on lots of coaching and workshops and whatnot with state-level folks who are, you know, significantly more sophisticated in their understanding of what lies ahead for us, so we feel pretty good about it, but it may shift, continue to shift, like next year might look more different than this year even.
Okay. Thank you, Phoebe. Is there any comments or questions from the public on this one?
Chair Scofield?
Yes.
Can we take a real brief tech break? We need to recall in call-in studio, it went down.
All right, we'll take a very quick break, and then we'll open it up to public comment. this item? Michael?
I think, I think it's obvious, or maybe not obvious, maybe it's agreeable that housing is an issue in Nevada County. And Hardy had opened up a suggestion of, of finding areas of commonality that I might be able to be part of, of helping in ways that would contribute to the community. And I'm not aware of a committee that the board has put together to, to understand the problem with housing, how to create housing, short and long term. I think it's pretty clear that housing for single moms is, there's a shortage, housing for youth is a shortage, there's housing shortages in all aspects of our community. I think that the, I feel the shortage in housing is contributing to homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, and so on. And I think the real problem in our community is we just simply haven't added inventory for almost two decades. I would like to see a committee, and be part of a committee possibly, that would look at how to increase housing inventory on a 1% or 3% annual basis. And I think that there's, I think there's lots of ways to get it together and to figure out how to actually change the housing problem in our community. I, I think the foundation of the problem for our community is, is we haven't taken rezoning serious to make it possible for developers to build affordable housing, and I don't, I use affordable very loosely, because it's really, nothing's affordable now. So again, I would suggest the board put together an ad hoc group that looks at seriously meeting our goals with housing element plans, and taking a serious look how to create short, medium, and long-term goals in creating housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, Phoebe, thank you for being here. Yeah, the question has come up by the board that how, how this fiscal impact will be curbed in the future. So I just have a couple really quick questions. Who is responsible for the mental health in our community? And have you sought consultation outside of the county or state?
Directed to me, Calvin, thank you.
And so I, I am. I'm directing that to everyone in the room, including Allison Lehman.
I got it, I got it, I got it, keep going.
Including Allison Lehman, who
Keep going, Al, Calvin, we got it.
gave this, this agenda item. I mean, shouldn't they be warning our, our community as to the financial impacts? Aren't we looking at $8 million in about three years? And we've spent over $130 million that I calculated in the last couple of years, so in behavioral public and mental health. So this is a, this is a tower that's being built with no foundation, and it's, it's coming down and crashing on the taxpayers. So I have some questions. You asked the public, do you have any questions? So I'd like some answers to those questions, those two.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Yes, there is, yeah. Okay, so I'll, I'll make a few more questions. So when you talk about the abuse of history, abuse of, of, of what you represent as Board of Supervisors, what is the history of the mental health in Nevada County? You guys have been mopping up the mess. We, the parents, are mopping up the mess of our public education, teaching confusion, teaching all kinds of things, forcing vaccinations. How many people here have had 72, 72 doses of vaccination materials? Anyone here? That's what the public school's doing. Dr. Richard Pan admitted that. He admitted injuries went up 17% in one year's time. Injuries to the brain create opportunities for mental health. So my questions are, has, and I would recommend that you postpone this for the health and safety of the citizens in this community. You cannot allow the state to mandate an unknown program. There's no fiscal impacts on this that are clear, there is no mental impacts that are clear, there are no health and safety impacts that are clear. What will this result in? So postponed for lack of disclosure, which is going to be resulting in fiscal and health impacts, and the statistics on the vaccine history, the chronological medical history, these should be included in your report. The grants, who's funding the grants that are behind this? That should be on your website of the county. Who is behind pushing this agenda?
Okay, thank you, Calvin.
In other words, there's partly an agenda within this, it's embedded.
Thank you, I, thank you. I, you know, who is, who is funding this? It's, it's, in my mind, we're basically a contractor of the state of California. If you looked at that first graph that came in, all the dollars come from the state of California, so we don't just say, hey, we're not going to do this. If we don't do this, and we don't get the funding from the state, we don't have the program, so that's pretty obvious to me. Is there any other public comments or questions?
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Good morning, Phoebe. My main question is, I want to honestly know what has truly happened to common sense? You know, I, I have my thoughts about the LBTGQ agenda, and I really won't get into it, but honestly, honestly, I think you guys should really think about that, about what's going on. I know you guys are, are doing what you can to help, but, you know, I think everybody on the board should ask themselves, you know, what was it like when you first moved here, and what was it like now? And why are some of the traditional American home-family values disappearing? We need to fight to bring those back. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, are there any calls, Madam Clerk, or?
Chair, we have no callers on this item.
Very good. I'm going to close the general, the public comment on this item, and I'll bring it back to the board, I think, or I mean Hardy, I believe you had another question.
No more questions for me, thanks, Phoebe. I, I really appreciate you putting the presentation together in advance of the consent calendar and the way that the agenda's lined out, I just wanted to compliment you on that, Chairman, because I think it, it's great to explain this, it's no lack of complexity, so thank you for taking the time to do it, not only for us, but for everybody in the audience and the public. Just philosophically speaking, all my questions were answered, I support your work, I totally, I think you're doing a great job, I think our staff is doing a great job reaching into those areas in the rural county and making a difference. It's challenging, I think it's going to continue to be challenging. The one piece for me, and I brought this up before, is the 68% of services rendered through contracts. I would like, just as one board member, maybe in the future, to think about looking into, just talking a little bit more about how much we do in-house and how much we contract out, because there's general and administrative cost built into the system, and I know that it introduces a lot of flexibility in a really system that's fraught with volatility, and so I totally recognize that, but it just, the dollars are just really big. And so I know that we spend a lot of time looking closely at the contracts, because that 68% translates into service contracts that we review in the consent calendar, and so we look through all those, but each one of those providers has their own method of doing work and providing services in different areas of the county. So just as one board member, I look closely at that, and I recognize that you're doing a great job managing those, and so I just want to put that out there, but thank you again.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion Supervisor Hall seconded by Supervisor Bullock. This is a resolution approving the Nevada County Mental Health Services Act, three-year program and expenditure plan for fiscal year 2023, '24, '24, '25, and '25, '26. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. District Four.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
And District Two.
Yes. Okay, I want to point out that we have a scheduled item for 10 o'clock, but we've got some important issues that we need to get through at this time, so I apologize to anyone that, who may be sitting in just for that hearing. It will remain on our agenda, and it will come up later, but at this point, we're not going to be able to hold to the 10 o'clock schedule. Okay? All right, so at this time, we're going to go to our consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may raise their concern to the board members prior to the consent agenda being introduced. The supervisors will take the concerns under consideration and decide if there is adequate reason to remove the item from consent. Board, any items to be pulled?
Yes, please, I wanted to pull item 28, please.
Any other items? Seeing none, is there any items the public would like to see pulled?
I would like item 11 pulled, and and I would like to amend item number 28.
Calvin, I'm very sorry, that last one, 28? Oh, it's been pulled, it's been pulled. Very good. Item number 11, a renewal contract in the county in Imagine Arts and Family Therapy. Board, would, would anyone like to see that pulled? Okay, I'm sorry, Calvin, we're not going to pull that one. All right, 28 is pulled. So what I'd like to do is call for the remainder of the consent agenda. Hardy, I understand you have a comment on this.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from item two. I have a real property interest and a business relationship on that, and I'd like to, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining consent items.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second Supervisor Hall, and I want to comment in consultation with our county council. We can, we can go ahead with this, recognizing that item number two We can, we can go ahead with this, recognizing that item number two is being recused by Supervisor Bullock, but he can remain to stay here for the remainder of the vote.
Chair, that's correct, and we'll just reflect that on the minutes that he recused on that item.
Yes. Thank you, County Council. All right, Madam Clerk?
Chair, I missed the second motion.
Oh, did we say, uh? Did I have a second?
Oh, I seconded.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Supervisor Bullock motion seconded Supervisor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize for missing that.
I missed it too.
District Four.
District Four, yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
And District Two.
Yes. All right, so at this time, we will go to item number twenty-five, twenty-eight. Anyway.
Thank you.
Heidi, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I support this item. I just wanted to bring it forth so, so there's clarity, so if the public had any questions or it's very clear what it is we're doing and why.
Very good. Natalie, would you like to come up? Would you give us an explanation, please?
Okay, so I believe that this is the sort of routine contract renewal for our use of the Hart Inner Civic voting system. To my knowledge, this county has used Hart Inner Civic for years. This is a routine contract to renew our use of the voting system.
Very good. Board members, any questions on this? Heidi?
Yeah, so we've used this for many years, as well as other counties. Am I correct? A number of other counties are using this system across the state, and it's considered solid and reliable and has integrity. Is that correct?
I believe now we've got twelve counties that use Hart Inner Civic. It is one of four certified voting systems in the state of California. It's not only considered to be safe, but it is actually tested and certified by the state based on guidelines that are based on, you know, our federal standards for certifying voting systems. And so all of the voting systems, and just to be clear about that, the state of California uses Dominion Voting, Hart Inner Civic, ESNS, and one other system called the Voting System for All People. I didn't pick the name, but it was created by Los Angeles County. All of these voting systems must be certified either in full or conditionally by the state before anyone may use them. There is a very long document that, if you're interested, you may read. It is found on the Internet. It is the California Voting System Standards, and all voting systems must adhere to those standards or they may not be certified. The certification process takes months at great sort of detail and cost for the state and for the voting system vendors, and then we have our pick as to which voting system that we use. Just to, you know, sort of add to that, you know, these voting systems must also adhere to the Help America Vote Act and to the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, you know, the reason why this is important, because everyone has the right, under California law, to vote privately and independently. What that means is if you do not want anyone to help you with your vote, you have the right to vote on your own. But some people need a little bit more help. The voting systems facilitate that process by, for example, reading you the ballot or giving you the ability to make a font that's too small for you even larger, so you can make your choices and then cast your ballot. All the voting systems must be able to do that at minimum. They also must, under California law, be able to produce a paper trail, and for us, that is a paper ballot that we go ahead and use for our one percent audit at the end of every election. On top of all that, the counties are required to do testing ahead of every election. The audit is another form of test after the election, and the state has a lot of processes for getting independent third parties to test the equipment and make sure that any proprietary information is held in escrow safe from any sort of vulnerabilities.
Thank you. I wasn't even aware of all of that. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Sure.
Thank you, Natalie. Any other questions from the Board? Fine, at this point then, I'll open it up to public comment, questions?
Good morning, Natalie. Thank you for being here. The Board, I would like you to ask this question of our Elections Office, if they could actually set up a time to do a one-hour or two-hour presentation on the whole voting system with the, with the machines that they use. Also, I think the Board has a duty to disclose the process of the disclosures following an election and how those disclosures and transparent audit occur. If that will not be answered today, I would like that meeting, I'd like this postponed and a meeting set up for that, so the public can have a chance of understanding how the voting system is not concealed votes, that it is actually transparent votes and it's public, so that the people know that they can go and they can see that they had voted, because there's no tracking on your ballot all the way through with your name on it to the end where it could be audited physically. So I think that it should be done physically and be able to be accessible by people who vote in this county, not just on an electronic device. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. I don't think there's any desire to withhold the vote on this today. However, the idea of a presentation might be something that could be considered. Thank you, Natalie. Is there any other comments? What was the question? Oh, transparency. I think there's, I think Natalie answered the question with her. I'm sorry, Calvin, I think that's good enough. The presentation is something that can be considered, though. And at this time, I'd like to close the public comment. Any other, I consider it closed. And I'll call for a resolution. Motion? Motion Supervisor Hall?
Yes, make the motion too.
A second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District Four.
District Four, yes.
District, District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
And District Two.
Yes. All right. At this time, we're going to take a brief break for a closed session. Am I correct? Madam Clerk, I see you looking at me.
Chair Schofield, when the call-in studio went down, there was one person waiting to give general public comment. I don't know if you're capable of willing to reopen for this one person who's waiting for general. If not, we can, I'll have a conversation with them.
Are they still waiting?
Yeah.
We can take three minutes, I believe, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Can we bring the caller in, please?
Good morning, this is Jean Franklin. I am in District Two. Supervisor Schofield, you're very well aware of me, and my concerns about a commercial grow in our area, specifically twenty-two, three-zero-nine Meyer Ravine Road. Just touching base, wanted to just take an opportunity to find some more information out or just bring to light that we are still actively against this grow. I did get an email from Matthew Kelly at your direction that I speak with him. I'd rather have a meeting with myself along with other residences, so I have proposed that to Mr. Kelly this morning via an email reply. I also am really hoping that the Board might be able to shed some information regarding the, what is it called? Exclusionary zone. This was referred to in a Union article dated January twelfth, where Supervisor Schofield is quoted as saying, wanting more discussion of the possibility of an exclusionary zone where cannabis cultivation or processing would not be allowed. Exclusionary zones could include private communities and other areas where neighbors do not want the industry. This, in particular, does apply to the residences of Meyer Ravine and surrounding areas. I just, again, just wanted to bring light, let you know that, you know, we did approach the Board on your April eighteenth meeting, myself along with four or five other members, excuse me, residents, and we're just, I understand that, you know, cannabis is king in our county right now, but this is definitely not something that we want. The proposal right now is for a five thousand square foot building along with three, three thousand square foot greenhouses. What I understand is because it is a forty-three acre parcel, that if they are granted approval for this, they could actually double in size because of the amount of acreage on that particular plot of property, which would be insanely large, and again, nothing that we want. We don't want the one that is in for permit right now, and I just, I just wanted to take an opportunity, being on hold for an hour, to discuss this, and I'm willing to meet with Matthew Kelly, with my other neighbors. Again, the road is a situation that really needs to be addressed, one lane, private road, one access. If there's a ginormous commercial grow, that's really going to impede on how, God forbid, there's a fire of all of us getting out safely.
Thank you, Jeanie.
So I just want to thank you for this time.
Thank you, Jeanie. Thank you for waiting for an hour. We apologize for that, and do know that Matt is in the process of contacting you for that meeting. Thank you, Jeanie.
Okay, super. Thank you, thank you. Have a good day.
All right, so at this time, we are going to take a recess and go into closed session. We'll be out shortly.
And would you like me to read that item?
Yes, I would, County Council.
So pursuant to the agenda, item twenty-three, three-six, five-two, Board of Supervisors is going into closed session related to the property as listed in the agenda. Negotiators for the county are Steve Monahan, and, and that's it.
Madam Clerk, would you please, I mean County Council, please read us back into session?
Yes. Coming out of closed session, just information was provided to the board.
We did not have public comment on that closed session, although we are going right into that subject. So we will have public comment on this as we introduce the item. So this is, I'm sorry, let me get to this. Justin Drinkwater, this is a resolution approving an agreement to consummate the purchase of a 21.48 acre parcel located at 12270 La Bar Meadows Road and 12022 La Bar Meadows Grass Valley. Justin? Steve?
Good morning, Chair Schofield, Honorable Board Member. Steve Monahan, your Director of the Information and General Services Agency. And with me is Justin Drinkwater, your Director of Facilities Management. Very excited to bring this item to you this morning. It's a project we've been working on for, oh, boy, probably 18 months when we first were looking at this piece of property. This property, and Justin's going to go through some slides with you in just a moment, is adjacent to our current operation center for the Public Works Department. And it's industrially zoned, and it has a lot of potential. We originally were looking at this property, about six, seven acres of it 18 months ago, for green waste processing. We know we have a huge need in our community to process all this biomass that we're getting out. And we don't know the longevity of the current location that we're being used at the mine site. And the site was also looking at maybe possible bio generation project, you know, or use in an air curtain burner, something to really get rid of that green waste and save costs on hauling it down the hill. 18 months ago, when we were looking at this site, it came off the market. Seller found a buyer who was looking at purchasing all of their 32 acres of available property. We thought we'd lost this opportunity. That sale fell through, so we were looking back at this at the original seven to eight acres, and then looking at possibly buying more acreage based on other county needs. Few of those would be, it's right adjacent to the operation center. Our Transit Director has mentioned that they're going full electrification on all of their buses and on their assisted program. And we'll need more sites for those electrification, charging stations, and bus storage in the future for that other program. We're also looking at the green waste, of course, as I mentioned before. We're looking at a site possibly for the animal shelter, relocating the animal shelter in a more centralized location that will solve some problems with endangered species and that redesign that we were looking at on the current site. And Justin has some other uses that we've been looking at as well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Justin.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate the opportunity to present this to the board. As Steve mentioned, this is projects we've been working on for the last couple of years. We contracted with an appraiser. We got a fair market appraisal on this property back in March. We went to the, into closed session to obtain approval to negotiate with the sellers for up to 33 acres of the property. Based on our appraisal, we looked at, you know, potentially, our initial offer was for 15 acres of the entire 33 acre, which was two parcels. You can see in the map, in the highlighted space, we came back to this size of a property purchase, which is 21.48 acres. That was through the negotiation process and the sellers desiring to basically provide us an additional six point, 48 acres, no additional cost with a small increase in the price per acre, which was within our appraised market value and was deemed to be a fair offer to both parties. And that's why we're here to present this total purchase of $2,649,850 for the 21.48 acres. We have brought this item, this property purchase, to the Capitol Project Subcommittee in recent months, as well as the Budget Subcommittee. County staff and County Council have completed multiple weeks of due diligence review of all the existing documents related to the property. All environmental documents have been reviewed, and zoning compatibilities have been reviewed as well. As Steve mentioned, this property is zoned M2, which is general industrial, and fits within the proposed use that we have for the property. And a full review has been completed of the existing Department of Toxic Substance Mitigation Plan. As you see in the picture, there is about an acre site in the middle of the property there that is paved, kind of sticks out when you drive by. And many of you have probably seen the work that had gone on in the last year when you drive by the site. And that is a mitigated parcel within the site that has been fully engineered and approved by the Department of Toxic Substance to basically mitigate the soil contaminants that were found in the site. Were all consolidated within that one acre parcel and compacted and then paved over so that there's no water, you know, infiltration into that site. And that mitigation plan will be something that the county has approved and signed off on, and will be able to monitor in perpetuity to its stipulations of that no disturbance of that soil in the future. So we see it as a very useful, actually amenity to the property in that it's a ready-made parking lot for storage and parking. As far as any further property details, I think we As far as any further property details, I think we covered pretty much most of these. That's just kind of the lot split, the official lot line adjustment that carves that two acre parcel into one, highlights that DTSE site there and that little square box. And then as far as the funding, as I mentioned, the negotiated sale price of the property is $2,649,850 with 50% of the closing cost estimated to be $12,000 to a total cost to the county of $2,661,850. This cost is proposed to be released from the facilities planning assignment in the general fund, which is in alignment with the intended use of that assignment to acquire and maintain facilities and infrastructure as defined in the county's fund balance policy. In order to offset the impact of this acquisition to the general fund, staff will work with the finance authority to leverage excess Nevada County Operations Center bond proceeds to reimburse the general fund for previously incurred capital improvement costs. Well, that is the extent of our presentation to the board today. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have this time.
Very good, Justin, thank you. Board members, questions? No questions? Open up to the public, any comments, questions? All right, Bill.
Yes, good morning again. We're just curious, how much, so there's going to be, when is this project supposed to be completed, and how much jobs is it going to create in this county? I was curious about that, thank you.
Bill, I think at this point, there's no projects. This is strictly buying the land at this point. I might want to talk about the green waste portion of it a bit, maybe, Justin or Steve?
Yeah, what about the green waste?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Portion of the project? Give me a little bit more details on it, if you would?
Sure, and I'm not sure we have many more details, but if you would, Steve.
Yeah.
Sure, Chair Schofield. Green waste, it would be similar to what we're doing out on the mine site right now in partnership with Cal Fire and with the Fire Safe Council in that we would either do neighborhood dropouts and bring the green waste to this site, or have the public come to this site and drop it off. You know, we haven't figured out the logistics on that yet. As far as jobs, those green waste events, they're running around a million dollars. I'd have to look at Craig, our Emergency Services Director, to see what that is, but I believe those Cal Fire grants and the grants that Fire Safe Council have, it's about a million dollars per event now at the scale that we're doing those. And that directly goes to local contractors to process and grind that material and then pull it offsite. So, I mean, that would be the direct economic impact that would happen on that property.
And we do have an active project that is going out to bid with Public Works, and the intention is to use this property to allow a contractor to bring all the roadside vegetation and process it there. So we have an immediate need for the property. Otherwise, we would have to potentially rent leased property to process this roadside material that's in active contract that's going out this fall in the Public Works Department. We are making use of the property right away.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Bill. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We have no callers, Chair.
Okay, bring it back to the board, and I would entertain a motion, or I ask, is there any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I would make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
I would second it.
Second it. Supervisor Hook, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, District Four.
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Justin, thank you, Steve. All right, our next agenda item is a individual board member, members, being brought by Supervisor Swarthout and Supervisor Bullock. This is approval of a joint letter of opposition, unless amended, to Senate Bill 584, as amended May 18, 2023, imposing a 15% tax on the occupancy of short-term rentals for the purpose of funding labor force housing. Lisa or Hardy?
Thanks, excuse me one second. This is a Senate bill that got brought forward. It was brought to my attention from Visit Truckee Tahoe, the destination management organization in Truckee. Obviously, STRs are a big component of our local economy in Truckee, and so Member Swarthout and I joined forces because she as well has a number of STRs in the Grass Valley area that promote visitation, tourist recreation, and all those things that we kind of rely on as the economic engine. I know that STRs in my community have been definitely debated because of their impact and their effect on the local housing stock. But understanding that, a tax of 15% would be untenable for the business community in looking at creating a viable STR business model going forward, and Jeff can give us additional details on that, but Placer County is getting, bumping up against that 30% mark, so 30 cents on the dollar of everything the STR owner gets would be transferred to other sources, which would make the rates not competitive and effectively shut that industry down. So with that, we did a lot of discussion with our fellow elected officials through Placer County and different local jurisdictions and other DMOs, and decided that it was the best piece to oppose it unless amended. It sounds to me like the bill is nearly dead on arrival at this point, probably based on our input and the hard work from Jeffrey Thorsby, but I'll let him speak to that, so thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree 100%, and also transient occupancy tax has always been a local tax, and it gives the local entities the ability to raise it or lower it based upon their economic needs. So when you talk about putting another 15%, that's going to go straight to the state, it really limits our ability as communities to ever have an increase in the TOT. And I know Truckee did an increase, I believe, in 2020 to 13.25%, and part of that money goes back to the town of Truckee. Most of it goes back to the town of Truckee, but they increased it because they needed more. My understanding was it was a snow removal, and, you know, they needed that money for for local things. So this, to me, is a no-brainer. I know the California League of Cities is opposing this for that local control reason. I believe the city of Grass Valley also is.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming the town of Truckee maybe as well.
Yeah, varying opinions on that, but definitely the local control and having to reapply for grant funding to get your own TOT back was one of the big drivers.
And the TOT, it's not just a tax that we levy, it does have to be voted on by the residents, so, you know, they get to have the say, and then they get to have the say on how the money is spent versus 15% straight back to the state. We would have no say on how that money was spent. We wouldn't even know if we would get our actual return to source.
That's true.
We probably wouldn't. They'd give us some small percentage because we're rural, so this is one of those things that it's a one-size-fits-all that doesn't work.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Hardy. Any other questions? No questions? Public comment, questions? Seeing none. Jeffrey, you want to make comments?
Sure, absolutely, thank you so much Chair Schofield, I mean, I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, my apologies, yeah, so thank you, my name is Jeff Thorsby, I'm your Senior Management Analyst, and thank you for your remarks as Supervisor Swarthout and Supervisor Bullock. I think you kind of articulated the issue well. As a quick update, so this is Senate Bill 584, and just as you articulated, it would, should it have been passed, would have imposed a 15% TOT tax on top of other local transient occupancy tax. As a quick update, yesterday, the author did pull the bill, so the bill is not moving forward, and that's because the author was not amenable to potential amendments that the Assembly Committee on Housing would have imposed upon that, that bill, or would have not have passed it, and so the author decided to pull it, and so that's where it's at. The reason why we felt it would be important to still bring it forward is we think, we would anticipate that a bill, this bill would either come back or could be incorporated into another bill, and so just getting the board's input would be important. I will say, which, this, the letter we're bringing for you, before you today is also a joint letter with Placer County and Marin County, so we've worked together with them, with your state legislative advocate who brought us all together, and you're right on the mark Supervisor Bullock, in terms of it would increase for Placer and Marin County, they would be looking with a 15% increase in TOT at a 29% TOT rate on STRs, which is really, really high. So that being said, the bill is not active right now, but we're still bringing it forward, and should your board decide to approve and authorize the chair to sign and submit this letter, we would then file it with the author and the state legislature, and that also provides framework for staff should something similar come forward and we have an opportunity to advocate on your behalf as you see fit. I will just also articulate, the League of Cities did oppose unless amended, as well as RCRC did as well. And just to highlight too, the city of Grass Valley is also bringing forward this to the city council, and recommending a letter of opposition. Whether or not they'll move forward now that the bill is not moving forward, I'm not sure, but I would anticipate they may follow suit with yourselves. And then, of course, the town of Truckee, while they don't have a formal position, staff did raise major concerns on the ability to go back to the voters if you're looking at a 29% TOT rate in the region, and the impacts to the local economy. But that being said, I'll just also last articulate, the letter before you basically articulates to oppose the bill unless amended under three points. One would be to exempt the pre-existing TOT communities with voter-approved taxes that have some dedication to community initiatives or housing and community development. Two, to include a return to source provision. This bill would have basically articulated that that 15% tax would have gone to a labor force housing fund, which would then been dedicated to a source as the legislature would see fit. We would anticipate that would be a competitive grant process, which rural counties specifically inherently are at a disadvantage during those processes. And I also say, communities, for example, in the town of Truckee would also be at a disadvantage given what their AMI rate is on housing, so that was a major concern, so a return of source would be important. And last component would be to require some type of transparent disclosure of STR contacts. So as the bill is currently written, there is no provision to provide that disclosure, which is inherently kind of a problem with the bill. There's no way to follow up for enforcement. I will say, in this, you, this county has contracts to help work with Airbnb as well as another contract to help get our TOT from STRs, so I think that's good, and that's from the action of your board. Anyways, I'll go and stop. I think you have all the information, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so based upon that update, and we appreciate that very much, Jeff, I'll continue to keep the public comment open based upon that update. Is there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, nobody online?
There are no callers, Chair.
Very good. I will close the public comment then and bring it back to the board. Any further questions? I'm assuming you want to proceed with this. Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that we send the letter with the chair's signature.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
Second.
Second Supervisor Bullock, Madam Clerk?
You can do a voice vote if you'd like.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Jeff, great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good, Jeff. All right, so at this point, we're going to reconvene, or we are going to recess the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as Nevada County Sanitation District Number One. So I'll call that meeting to order, and the first agenda item is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023-24 Nevada County Sanitation District Number One, Labor, Risk, Management, Reserve, Shared Operation Maintenance, Capital Acquisition and Improvement budgets for the, all of our zones. And I will recognize. RCEO Allison or Martin?
So we'll go ahead and defer to our Chief Fiscal Officer, Deputy CEO, Martin Pult.
Very good. Martin?
Thank you, good morning Chair Schofield, members of the board. I'm here with Barry Anderson, who's the Management Analyst in the CEO's office, to present a few items here. This one is related to the sanitation budget. We discussed the sanitation budget in full with the board a week ago on June 20th in this chamber, and nothing has changed in that budget that we discussed with you and Tricia Tillotson presented. It's a budget totaling $10,841,510, and with that, we, and we did a motion to, intent to approve this budget, and we request that the board, recommend that the board adopt this resolution.
Very good. Board, any questions? Seeing none, any public comment, questions on the sanitation district? Seeing none. We will close public comment. And let's see, I guess we can go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this budget.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook?
Second.
Second Supervisor Bullock, Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two?
Yes. All right. With that, we will adjourn the sanitation district, and we will call the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Chair Schofield?
June 27th, yes.
We did have public comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, general comment for Nevada County Sanitation.
General comment on sanitation district? All right, seeing none. Close public comment on that and move forward. We will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. And at this time, we will be introducing Mr. Pult again, and this will be a resolution, I assume. CEO Allison, introduce Martin.
Yes, Martin Pult, thank you.
All right, and again, this is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023-24 Nevada, I'm sorry. All right, we have several resolutions on this one, so Martin, I'm going to let you take it from here.
Thank you Chair Schofield, Martin Pult, your Deputy County Executive Officer and Chief Fiscal Officer. Yeah, several items here. All of these items are essentially unchanged from what you've seen, except for, I'll note one correction that we've made, but essentially the same as you saw last week in the budget hearing. So this one is also related, this is a resolution approving the appropriation limit for fiscal year 23-24 of $94,372,478. This is also known as the GAN limit, this appropriation limit, which essentially in 1978, along with Prop 1, Prop 13, limits the amount of taxes that can be used in a budget. The auditor controller crunched the numbers and came up with that $94 million limit. We're well below that limit in terms of the taxes used in our budget, we're at about $83 million, so we do meet this requirement, and with that, we recommend that the board approve this resolution.
All right. Board, any questions? Comments, public comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and with that, entertain a motion on resolution SR 233602.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. Next is SR 233603. Next is SR 233603, Resolution Adopting Authorized Personnel Staffing.
Thank you, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Yes, this item was also discussed in the presentation that we did last week in the budget hearing, and the staffing remains unchanged as those budgeted in the recommended budget. 872.1 total staffing is requested, and there's a schedule attached to this item delineating and specifying each department's staffing contingency. So with that, we recommend that the board adopt this resolution.
Motion?
These salaries are reflected in all the budgets. These salaries are reflected in all the budgets that were reviewed last week in the public, in the public hearing, the recommended budget. And we did make a change, a correction, and we had incorrectly put in some prior year salaries. The document before you does represent the salaries that are in the budget, and it had been reviewed with budget subcommittee and gone through that process. So with that, we recommend that you approve this resolution.
Thank you, Martin. Board? CNN, public questions, comments? CNN, I'll close the public comments. Madam Clerk? I'll entertain a motion. Hold on, Madam Clerk.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
Second.
Second Supervisor Bullock, Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. All right, our next item is SR 233605, A Resolution Adjusting Budget Commitments and Assignments for Fiscal Year 2022 Through 2023.
Thank you, Chair Schofield. This document, this item represents the 40, $40.1 million general fund balance that's estimated at the end of, actually, I'm sorry, $39.1 million estimated at the end of this current year, 2223, and the assignments that are within that $39 million. We did talk about that, those assignments, capital facilities, information systems, infrastructure, set aside for board priorities, economic uncertainties and emergencies. And so as reflected in the document and presentation to you last week, that is reflected in the document before you, and those assignments that we're requesting the board approve. So we recommend that you approve those assignments for the end of this year.
Very good. Thank you, Martin. Board, any questions, comments? CNN, public comment? CNN, motion, I'll close public comment, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, seconded Supervisor Hall, Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. Next is SR 233606, this is a resolution adopting the final budget commitments and assignments for fiscal year 2023-2024. Martin?
Thank you, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Similar to the resolution just adopted, that was the assignments for the end of 2223, and that $39.1 million in the general fund, and basically categorizing that. So we also estimated in our meeting last week, we showed you a picture of what our estimate is for the end of 2324, and it's also $39.1 million. We came in with a balanced general fund budget. The commitments and assignments shifted a little bit, and this resolution reflects those commitments and assignments that we expect and estimate for the end of 2324. And with that, I recommend that you approve this resolution.
Very good. Thank you again, Martin. Board? No questions, public?
So as we've seen tragically, my name's Calvin Clark from Rough and Ready. We've seen tragically over the many years, the state pushing the spending to the point where we have bloated our, our county governments with so much money, so much opportunity to grow, and in the, in this resolution, adopting the final budget commitments and assignments for the fiscal year 2023-24, I just make a suggestion. Transparency is really vital, and as we've seen, the contracts, as were mentioned by Mr. Bullock, that 60% or so is farmed out on a lot of things. A lot of the, the departments are spending money to contracts, contractors, to do things. And I really believe that there's conflicts of interest in this. I believe that there's a because, or there's a lack of transparency to determine on your level whether there's a conflict of interest. How do you know? How do you know that these contractors that are working, just as when the Board of Supervisors hired a contractor for $200,000 to monitor every cell phone in Nevada County under contact tracing? I mean, you didn't even have them come here and, and do a report. So three things. One is, yes, I'm concerned about disclosure for where this money is being spent, on the side of who's receiving it and who they also get funded by. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is by growing government, as we've seen, that there will be an $8 million deficit in public health coming up in three years, if we keep going the same way that we're going. And so forecasting the financial impacts are vital, not just reporting on what we have currently, but what's going to happen in the future. And thirdly is the, the need for the county government to be reduced in size, and to have the courage to say no from the state, or to the state, and to giving yourselves pay raises, and giving everybody pay raises, and handing out money like it's candy. There's going to have to be some tough decisions, or else we keep inflating the dollar to the point where homelessness increases. And, and tragically, you know, legislators, you know, pass all kinds of unconstitutional things, and we need to re-align our sights with the basic principles of what this country was founded. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. With that, I'll close public comment. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook?
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout, Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two?
Yes. And finally, this is a resolution adopting the Nevada County Fiscal Year 2023-24 budget Mr. Pult?
Chair Schofield, members of the board. First, I want to thank, before this final resolution, the many staff members, the support of the Board of Supervisors, our CEO, Allison Lehman, department heads, and my right hand here, Barry Anderson, who, together with me, worked very hard to develop this budget, and with many department staff supporting. So really have a great staff members, and the budget subcommittee, I thought, did a great job, and thank you for being there this year. With that, we would like to recommend that the board approve this final resolution. This is to adopt the, the budget totaling $369.8 million. This budget remains unchanged since last week, we presented to the board the proposed recommended budget, and remains unchanged. And so with that, we recommend that the board approve this resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Martin. Board, Hardy?
Yeah, thank you, Martin, for presenting this and, and the many meetings that have led up to this. I just wanted to make a mention that I was honored to be part of the budget subcommittee this year as the vice chair, and I think at 15 meetings or so, somewhere near there, 15 days we spent going over each budget unit for the entire day. So 15 days of detailed analysis of the, of the budget, and each dollar, and each department head, and then managers within those sub-budget units, bringing forward all the information allowed Chairman Schofield and myself to answer, ask and answer all the questions that we had. I just wanted to say I commend you in operating that process because it's comprehensive, takes a lot of time and a lot of preparation, and I felt very comfortable after I got done with the budget process, understanding every element of the budget. And I look forward to the other members of the board going through that, some haven't, and others haven't, and they will. But I just want to say, job well done, and I feel very comfortable about the budget that's sitting before us.
Thank you, Hardy. Any other comments? Very good.
I would just say thank you again, too, I've gone through this, and I just, it's a lot of work and intense numbers, and you guys do a fantastic job, and, and not just for this year, but it's the forecasting that comes along with this budget. We don't just look at this year, we look at what it's going to be five years and on, right? It isn't something we just take, well, this is what we have for the year, and how are we going to get through it? So I really appreciate this, too. It was, I actually missed going through budget subcommittee this year, even with the amount of time it was, because it is, and I just want to point out to all the staff that did their budget, what do I say? Their budget summaries, yeah, they were impressive, and I really appreciate the work that goes into that from all the staff to say what's going on, how, what, what are they improving? What are they looking for, for the future? How do we make things better for our community? So kudos to all of you guys, thank you.
And I'd mention, too, one more piece is just the amount of diligence and the cost-saving elements that come into play, because there are cost-cutting measures at every level of the organization, and the budget number looks big, but if you sit around and add every single dollar up for 15 days straight, you understand where you get there. But there's a bunch of cost-cutting measures, alternative revenue sources, grant funding, optimization that goes into the background. So I really appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. Open it to general comments, questions?
Calvin Clark from Rough and Ready. Yes, I'm concerned that, that debt over the next, we're, we're hearing that $10 trillion will be what's owed on the interest of borrowed money by our federal government, $10 trillion in the, in the near future. We're talking about that trickling down. After they spend a lot of money, as you threw our Board of Supervisors, unknowingly or knowingly, intentionally or unintentionally, mandated or not mandated, that money's just been spent. It's been dumped like wheelbarrows full of hundred-dollar bills in every little town, every little street, to where this budget is now $369,817. To me, that's a lot of money. Do I, do I represent majority of humanity and Americans that say, wow, why are we spending so much money? Do I represent the, the person down at Grocery Outlet just trying to get some staples so they can survive on some food? Because all the other stores seem to be really inflated, and even Grocery Outlet's inflated compared to what it was. My concern is inflation. Inflation is not the increase of prices. Inflation is the oversupply of money pushed into the people, into the people's, into government pockets, into contractors' pockets. The oversupply of money results in the increase of prices. We talk about homelessness, we talk about all the problems that we have in the county, and we talk about government force, and we talk about the traditional process of discretionary spending. I just can't imagine how many pages it takes for $367 million to be spent. How many pages of legislative rubber stamp or intelligence decisions of what's been given to you by the state of California? And is this derived by you? Because in some ways, you're, are legislators, you're, you're the, the, the bills originating here in this, in this county. All bills that you're funding and pushing can be slowed down, and here's three ways to do it. First is, what are really the disclosures related to this? How many pages have you actually read? What are the, the, the strings that are attached? That's one. Number two is, what are the financial impacts? We don't often see a financial impact report of this spending. And then number three is, what is the moral basis of this spending? Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. No other public comment? No one online? I will close public comment. And I just want to say, I want to echo what Hardy and Sue said, Martin as the chair and the budget subcommittee, it's been a pleasure working with you, Barry, and all of your team. It really has been a pleasure working together, so thank you. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hook, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two?
Yes. Very good. All right, supervisors, at this point, we have another closed session scheduled, and I'll ask you this. We also have announcements. Do you want to do announcements today? No, no, that works for me, too. All right, so let's, we did them last week.
Two weeks.
All right, then, county, Madam Council, would you read us into?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah, you amended item number 28.
Yeah, but then you did not.
No, no, we, we posted, we did.
You didn't have a public comment?
We did.
So we did.
We did.
Related to the closed session item, as stated on the agenda, county council is requesting a closed session with Board of Supervisors to discuss a matter in which there is a significant threat of litigation.
Very good.
And, and public comment?
No, we're not going to do announcements, so we'll do closed session, and we'll come. Oh, yeah, so is there any public comment on the closed session that we're going into? I said, we, is there any public comment on the closed session that we're going into? Very good. Closed public comment, and we'll go into closed session.
So Madam Counselor, would you read us out of closed session?
Thank you. After going into closed session, information was provided to the board.